Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. We will have the invocation led by Councilwoman Scott and the pledge led by Councilwoman Cooper. Can everyone please stand?
Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear God, for life, health, and strength. We thank you, dear God, for letting us be able to come back again this month to be about the city and be about the business of the city. We pray to Heavenly Father, you will bless each and everyone that are here. We have so much to be thankful for. There's so much celebration in the month of October. We pray to Heavenly Father, you will bless us in a mighty special way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members? Present.
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 Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to adopt agenda as printed?
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. All in favor, show of hands, please. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, approval of minutes from the September 12th, 2023 mayor and council meeting?
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? No questions? All in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Thank you. We do not have any introductions for this evening. We will move on to our presentations. And they are as follows and will go in that order. Proclamation for the city of Lake City recognizing the city as a Purple Heart City. Ms. Harriet Rose presenting information about Domestic Violence Month. Michelle Daniels, Winkie Task Force Cancer Support Group, presentation on breast cancer awareness. And the Ronnie McNear Committee, presentation on the birthday celebration in honor of Dr. Ronnie E. McNear and the 5K run and walk. Ms. Rose, we're gonna go with the first one, which is the proclamation first, and then you can come back up. I will ask Deputy City Administrator Pete Cooper to accompany me. And I am going to read the proclamation out loud. And he will add any words he would like, if he likes. A proclamation of the city of Lake City recognizing the city of Lake City as a Purple Heart City. Whereas the city of Lake City has a proud history of supporting our active military and veteran population. And whereas the Purple Heart Medal is the oldest military decorator in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart Medal was the first award made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded in combat or have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms being killed in action against a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure that we never forget the sacrifices of our military service men and women. And whereas, city of Lake City has a large veteran population with many of its veterans being Purple Heart recipients. And whereas, city of Lake City appreciates the sacrifices of all of its military veterans, combat veterans, Purple Heart recipients, and their families for the sacrifices that they have made in defending our freedoms and wants to express gratitude and honor them. Now therefore, on this day of October 10th, 2023, I, Yumika Robinson, Mayor of City of Lake City, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the city of Lake City as a Purple Heart City. And hereby encourages the residents and businesses of Lake City to show their appreciation for sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and to show them the honor and support they have earned. Signed by yours truly, Mayor of the City of Lake City, Yumika Robinson.
On behalf of veterans everywhere, the ones that I've served with, the ones I wanted to meet as I went through my career in the Army for several years. When I actually got out of the military back in 95, I was just promoted to a non-commissioned officer. So I know how to take care of your soldiers and to be there for your family also. So when a veteran serves, his family serves also. And we do have a large population of veterans within Lake City and also in Florence County. And it's one thing about the Purple Heart, it's one of those humbling awards that is voluntary. You don't have to disclose that you're a Purple Heart recipient. So when I see a veteran, I always think of veteran because you never know what happened in their lives and what they went through, what their fellow soldiers went through in their families. So on behalf of veterans that I know and veterans that I've yet to meet in all branches of services, I do thank the city of Lake City and honorable Madam Mayor Yumika Robinson, also Council, for their gratitude. And this is gonna be the first step for many for veterans in Lake City. Thank you.
And if I must add, I am a mother of soldiers, my two sons who served. And at the current moment, my daughter is in basic training at Fort Jackson. So I can relate. Thank you. Ms. Harriet Rose?
My name is Harriet Rose and I work with PD Coalition. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And this is Ms. Asia McFadden.
Hello.
And she also works with me also. She is the Assistant Coordinator for Florence County, Lower Florence County. We are here this evening to briefly talk about domestic violence. It is very prevalent amongst the city. A lot of women and men live in silence. And they live in shame. They don't want anyone to know what's going on in their life. They don't want anyone to know that they get hit every night. They have a lot of emotional abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, psychological abuse, and destruction of property. One of the criteria for domestic violence now is stalking. We have seen a rise, this starting beginning this year, in PD region where several women were murdered by their either boyfriends, children, father, or husband. And it always started off as stalking. And unfortunately, it left both people at death. So that's why it's so important that we get out here and we talk about this. This is not a taboo subject. The more you know, the better you can protect your community. Legal options, domestic violence is a crime. It is a crime. It is against the law to harm or attempt to cause harm to another household member. Victims have the right to press charges with law enforcement. The first offense for domestic violence can be up to $2,500 or up to 90 days in jail. Civil action can be taken, can be pursued. Victims of domestic violence can file an order of protection against their abuser. In this order, the judge may provide a restraining order to keep the abuser away as well as temporarily address issues such as child custody, support, and possession of the home. So I really wanted to explain the legal part of this because a lot of people don't understand what their rights are. We get a lot of young women, they don't want, you know, "I just want him out of my house." But when you call 911 and the police or the sheriff go to your house, somebody's gonna be arrested. And it's not the state charging. I mean, it's not the person charging against the other person who's the abuser. It is the state of South Carolina that is charging. And so I wanna make that clear because we hear it all the time. Why they don't wanna go to the bond hearings, why they don't want to pursue or get an order of protection. But it's to protect them and their children. And it happens to men also. So I'm gonna let Asia talk.
I just wanna add on that domestic violence is a community issue. So in order for us to see a decrease in the issue, it does take a collaborative effort from other organizations, individuals, or businesses. And even though it's not talked about a lot, doesn't mean that it's not happening. It's often unreported. So yeah, we just wanna leave y'all with that. And we do wanna thank the city of Lake City for always supporting us in all the events that we do.
And also, Lake City Police Department. They have been very helpful and we learn from each other. They ask questions and we ask questions also. Thank you.
Are there any upcoming events for this awareness and also how can they get more information?
They can go to our website, which is pdcoalition.org.
We also have a Facebook page, it's PD Coalition also. And we serve eight different counties. So it's not just in the Florence County area. And we do have events coming up. We have a booklet over here with the upcoming events. And we also have a DV Women's Talk coming up. It's gonna be in Coward Recreation Center on Thursday from 10:00 to 11:30. We would love to see some of the women from our community show up there.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council in the city of Lake City. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month began in October of 1985. Twelve years later, at the age of 56, my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer, who is a former member, who former employee who worked for the city of Lake City. Nearly 300,000 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And one in eight women in America will be diagnosed with the disease in a lifetime. About one of every 100 breast cancer diagnosed in the United States is found in a man. Streens and early detections help save lives. It may sound redundant, early protection is the best protection, but it is not so. It does save lives. And we are here for each and every one. The Winkies Task Force, we wear pink ribbons, massages, and et cetera to let everyone know that you're not in this fight alone. We are a task force that will walk, pray, and run this race with you. There are many, many institutions that will be able to help. You can call 1-800-422-6237. And this is the information at the National Cancer Institute. And in 2013, my mother, the late, lethal Winkie McDaniels, set it on their institution board with doctors and scientists to find out further information, not just on breast cancer, but cancer as a whole. Today, you see just a few members of the Winkies Task Force who are here today. I would like for them to stand. Ms. Claritha Burgess is a 31-year cancer survivor. And you can't tell me what God can't do. But I challenge the city of Lake City on today. But this is not only Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but this is Liver Cancer Awareness Month. The National Cancer Institute estimated that 41,210 cases of liver and bowel ductive cancer will be diagnosed in the United States in 2023. And approximately 29,380 people are expected to die of adult liver cancer. So I therefore, I challenge my city, not just to only recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but we represent as a cancer support group, we represent them all because they all matter. And I challenge you, not just to set aside this proclamation for breast cancer, but I ask of you, I have brochures, and it tells you each month that what cancer it represents and its colors. And I ask that you ponder it within your heart to know that we will not just look at breast cancer, but all cancers matter. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mayor and Council, along with my task force, we salute you all. And it says the Appreciation Award presented to Mayor Yumika Robinson and the city of Lake City. We need more people like you in the world. We appreciate your kindness and thoughtfulness. And it's given on this day, October the 10th, 2023, from the Winkies Task Force Cancer Support Group. And I do have my advisor, my Bishop, Dr. Lyman Cooper, and if the task force, if you would like to come, I'd be greatly appreciative.
On behalf as one of the advisor of this great committee, as well as I call it a foundation, because of many years we've been here. But I would like to do a shout out at all the males that are present. Please get yourselves checked. If it wasn't for me being a part of this and let it become a part of our churches straight over the city, I would not have known that I had prostate cancer. I'm a four-and-a-half-year survivor. It's already been read, and all I wanna do is present it to you. Y'all keep up the good work. And find us something else to do by giving us some support and some financials.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
If I must say, I know they're returning to their seats, but just wanna say thank you for this appreciation award. We appreciate you and all that you do, the support group, because people need that support. Support is so crucial. And I say that because, because of two things that I can relate to. One, and I know that she would not mind me saying, she's not here tonight. She's my shadow, I'm her shadow. It's my mother. And she was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in August. And she just took her fourth treatment on yesterday. But she's doing well because she's a fighter. And Dad, I have to say, yes, I got it from her. But keep praying your prayers because I know she's gonna get through this. And my sister and I and family and class of '69, friends, family, my coworkers, the support is there. And that's what keeps her lifted truly. So we all have to support each other. And secondly, myself, in 2021, I actually had a lapectomy. And they, after that surgery, they said it wasn't cancer, but they wanted to keep an eye on it. And I've been going back every three months since then. Just today, I went back for, in the middle of the day, I went back for my appointment for my follow-up checkup. And it's very important to get checked because you never know. But they saw growth again. But I'm claiming that it's nothing. It is nothing. They're gonna do what they need to do as doctors, as God, you know, gifted them to do. And I trust them because I trust Him. And I know it's nothing. Continue to support each other, like you said, for breast cancer, and not just for breast cancer, Mom, but for all cancers. I just wanna quickly say thank you to the Winkies Task Force. Me personally, I don't know anyone in my family who has suffered from breast cancer or any type of cancer. But I just really wanna say that women are strong, who are survivors for breast cancer. Continue to fight, continue to be strong, and for the men as well, just continue to be strong and continue to fight. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Gloria Tizell and I am the Chairman of the Ron McNear Committee. I wanna take this opportunity to thank you for giving us the time to appear before Council to let you know about our celebration of life, our celebration for the life of Dr. Ronnie McNear. We have a 5K run every year before our app is birthday. This year is special because the 5K is being held on his birthday. So we have a birthday celebration Friday and Saturday. And in recognizing these ladies who came up before me, we keep in mind the needs of the community as we go about reminding people of Dr. McNear. Our committee is to perpetuate the memory of Dr. McNear and his dream. He's from Lake City. And we know his dream was, you can recognize your dream if you put in the effort. So as a result of this, we're having a health fair that Friday from 9:00 to 4:00 at the library in the community's meeting room. And we have some other activities as well. And I'm gonna let Tizell Gay come up and brief you and tell you about what we have going on during that time.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you all. On Friday, beginning at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock until 2:00, we have MUSC mammography mobile coming to Lake City, South Carolina. We are in need of more people to come and get their mammograms done. We have several slots that are still available. And I would've thought that these slots would've been filled by now because it's free. If you all know of anyone who needs a mammogram done, please let us know so that we can go ahead and get the application, the information so that they can send in and have that free service provided to them. In addition to that, we have the Office of Aging coming in for individuals 60 and older. And they will do a benefits checkup. They will go through their detail. It's personal, it's private. It's for that individual, not anyone else around them, but there's that individual. They will see them, they will address what they're They will see them, they will address what their needs are and see if they're receiving all of the benefits that they need at this time and provide them with what they're missing. We will have free visual screenings, um, by coastal, the coastal group. We'll also have flu vaccines, um, we will have our own Dr. Fullmore from Lake City. She will do medication questions. Individuals can bring in their medications and have it assessed to see if anything is contraindicated, um, that they're taking. So she will answer those personal questions for individuals also. Half of the information, um, half of this event will be in the library building. Um, that will pretty much be the Office of Aging because of the fact that it's private information and we need to have it separated, individuals separated. Um, and then the rest will be in the Ron McNair, um, building. The mammography mobile will be on the outside for individuals coming in. That is some of the information for Friday. On Saturday morning, registration for the five K will start at seven AM. The, uh, five K run and health fair will start at eight AM. So we will have another health fair that morning in the Ron McNair Center. Um, and the five K will start at eight AM. Um, after the five K, we will have the ambassador's speech. We have Colonel Samuel Glover, Jr., uh, he's active duty. He will come, he will provide, uh, information to the community. We will also have, uh, musical rendition, um, by a jazz musician out of Florence. And fingers crossed, we're going to have a three man, I mean, three plane fly over. I'm hoping that will occur. Um, just finding out some of that information today. We will have Claflin University, Winthrop University there, who will be presenting information to students, individuals who, uh, may want to go to college at those two schools. We will have Sisters in STEM doing drone demonstrations. We will have, um, Propel, uh, company who will have four simulators in the school, in the Ron McNair Center. And individuals have, will have a wristband where they will be able to go in. Um, it will be monitored and we will have, uh, our youth taking care of that. Uh, in addition to that, we have E equals MC squared. They will have hands-on activities for the students. Each student can go to each table and have those hands-on activities, which will include, um, slime color exploration, um, straws, uh, elephant toothpaste. Now, I don't know what any of this stuff mean, but these are the activities that they will have. We may also have, um, we will also have drone demonstrations outside as well for the community to participate in. Thank you for your time and we hope to see you all there, everyone from the city of Lake City. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. Ms. Gay is the coordinator for our birthday celebration and Mr. Clyde Best, Clyde, is our coordinator for our five K. If you feel energetic Saturday morning, uh, come out and join us in the five K. It is also a fun walk as well. So everybody's not running, you can walk as well. And you can also go online to itsyorace.com to register for the five K. Again, thank you all so much. We certainly appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you out Saturday morning or Saturday for our annual five K running. I want to thank the city of Lake City for all the support you have given us throughout the years. You've always been supportive in whatever we do and, uh, it's great to know that we have elected officials who's willing to help the community as much as you do. And for that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do want to recognize our Ron McNair committee members. Would you please stand? Thank you.
Thank you. And I know there was a lot of information said by Ms. Gay and Ms. Gloria, um, but we do have flyers here with that information on it. We have copies in the very back. Um, any information you would like to know, we have it back there. So please, our city clerk does an awesome job of making sure that we are, um, informed, our community is informed, and she keeps it packed back there. It's back there for you to get, for yourself, for your community, for your church, make announcements, just take it all, take it all that's there and we'll replenish it back every time. So, but thank you so much. Thank you all for the presentations and we're going to move forward. Next, we will have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address at the podium for the record with the city clerk to counsel.
Madam Mayor, citizens of Lake City and those representatives of Lake City, my name is Reverend Amari Bernard Hooker. I pastor Wesley Chapel, and I have come to you with several concerns. Um, you know, basically in Lake City, we talk about poverty, we talk about violence, we talk about crime, and we, we talk about housing and our churches with you and fighting those areas and working to better, for the betterment of the city. However, in recent months, probably about nine to twelve months, there's been a real conversation about mental health. And our church has been galvanized and motivated to even this year for our annual one-hundred-and-thirty-eighth anniversary, we are focusing on trauma and mental health. The day before our anniversary, sorry, chief, it's during Veterans Weekend, but eleven eleven, we are having a mental health training. We're bringing in trainers from Texas, from Lake City, from, um, South Carolina to set up and, um, mental health conversations around this community. We're asking you all, the city, to help partner with us and participate in that endeavor. We're also asking, tell your friends, tell your mama, tell your cousin and them. We want everybody to, can be there, to be there with us. Um, but we hope that this endeavor and its energy will spur some small group conversations and small group communities all around Lake City where people can talk about mental health and mental health issues and trauma issues. That's our long-term goal and we hoping that the city will help to facilitate our long-term goal of having conversations around Lake City that deal specifically with trauma, the effects of trauma and mental health. Hold up, I got one more minute. Hey!
Thank you. Anyone else? Next, we will go, we will move forward to our legislative part of our agenda. Mr. William Hall, city administrator.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Mayor and council, I present to you resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh three eight, final reading. A res- a resolution seeking the bid committee approval of the bid committee to award Ridgeway Electric LLC the bid for Blanding Street Park Duke Energy Concrete Pla- Pad for the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars and all matters related, uh, thereto, which Ridgeway Electric, um, has installed, will install a thirty-foot pit pay, paid pad and reconnect of electrical services lines for the city of Lake City at the Blanding Street Recreational Park for Duke Energy.
I need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero three eight for final reading, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-three point oh three nine, final reading. A res- resolution of the city of Lake City, South Carolina to accept funds in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cent from the South Carolina Park Recreation and Tourism and all matters related thereto. These funds are support of the Blanding Street fencing project.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero three nine for final reading?
Motion.
Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh four oh, final reading. This resolution is being brought to the mayor and council to seek approval to remove Ashley Page, who is no longer employed with the city of Lake City, from the grievance committee in all matters to be compliance with the employee's handbook and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero four zero for final reading?
Motion approved.
Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions?
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How long has Ashley Page been gone from the city?
June.
Okay. I can't remember who she, who she is or was.
She was the, the pretty little lady with the long fingernails. She worked up, well, in the tower and she worked with the, uh, Youth Intervention Program. Girl Scouts.
Okay.
Cheerleaders.
Okay, um, how long was she with us?
About a year and a half.
Okay. Let me ask, um, the, now this is the employee grievance committee, correct?
Employee grievance committee.
Okay. Uh, do we have any, um, do we have only city employees as members of that grievance committee? Okay, no outside?
No, sir. No man, and no management.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, um, uh, revisit and revise this grievance because a grieved employee does not stand a chance being, um, tried, I guess, and for lack of a better choice of words, a grieving employee does not stand a chance, um, with his, uh, fellow employees or peers hearing his grievance. I think there's no fairness to that. So, um, even though the motion is passed, I'd like to make, um, a recommendation and a sug- and suggestion that, um, before we continue with this, that it's revisited and revised by mayor and council. Because I, in, in, in other words, I think, um, we need to have some neutral people serving on that committee because, you know, that could, this could lead to a lot of, um, retaliation if an employee does not go along with a supervisor, and we know this is a very common practice. So I don't think it's a fair, um, I don't think it's fair to an employee. So we need to revisit that and revise it.
Okay. Two, two things. One, this is, is kind of, um, irrelevant to not, to this resolution tonight by removing Ms. Ashley Page. So what your statement was, so we, I think we need to move forward with this.
Well, I think.
And then come back and talk about that.
Well, I think, um, you.
Because I think that's kind of irrelevant.
Another, but that's, you're tied, you're tied to your opinion, but I disagree with that. And, um, but I think to replace one employee with another employee, we have the same situation going on.
So a motion can be made to amend the.
Gerevance committee. Okay, thank you.
But that needs a second and an immediate vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend that, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three zero four, zero point one.
We're on forty.
To include, to include, um, others, other than the city.
Restate that again because the resolution number was incorrect.
Resolution.
You're making a motion to amend resolution two zero two three point zero four zero, correct?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's going to encompass the second one also, but thank you for that, um, not that it's relevant. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, amend twenty twenty-three point zero four zero to include members from the community and with mayor and council revising it.
All right, is there a second?
Wait, I, I got a question. So this, this resolution, we're trying, we have to, the fact that she's not an employee anymore with the city, this resolution stated that since she's not an employee with the city, we have to remove her off the committee?
Yes.
That's what that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she, she resigned her position and no longer wants to be part of the city of Lake City. So she was on the grievance committee. We, we, we needed to move forward to update our grievance committee and so we need to remove her first.
And then the next one, next one is going to be, um, Brandon Carter replacing her.
But we have to stick with this one at the moment. So is there a second to?
So the second is simply to amend, is there a second to amend?
To the amendment.
Right, if there's not a second, then that's defeated and it's back to that motion in front, to that, to that resolution. There was already.
Okay.
A first and a second.
Comment, comment.
So now there's a.
Questions.
Now there's any more questions and then a vote on that point oh four.
Okay, so any more questions for?
Forty.
For point zero four zero. Okay, all in favor, show of hands.
Of going for it, right?
Yes. Any opposed?
All right. Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh four one, final reading. A resolution is being brought to mayor and council to seek approval of appointment of a new member to the grievance committee in order to be compliance with the employee's handbook and all matters related thereto. Andrew Legat replacing Ashley Page and Brandon Carter added as an alternate.
Need a, a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero four one for final reading?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If no questions, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh four two, final reading. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of Lake City to participate in the municipal association of South Carolina set off debt collection program, submitted claims to the association will forward them to the Department of Revenue by December first each year. The Department of Revenue matches the claims list with the refunds due to taxpayers. If there is any match, the tax, the Department of Revenue sets off the debt, notifies the taxpayer of the offset and forwards the amount collected to the association, which then forwards the amount collected minus administrative fees of twenty-five dollars per offset to the city of Lake City. The Department of Revenue also collects twenty-five dollars from the debtor for the every, for every successful set off. These collections costs are charged in addition to the original debt amount. The city of Lake City has written off in the amount of one hundred nine thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty cent delinquent debts from utility billing on July first, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, which will be set off for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Last year's write-off was a hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cent. That's a difference of eleven thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cent. In the prior years, our set off debt has gotten to the amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero four two for final reading?
Motion approved.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? I think there just need to be a correction.
Uh, yes. It's June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, please. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Any other questions on this resolution? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-three oh four three, final reading. Uh, basically, it's the same resolution as above, but it's dealing with the judicial system. Uh, the resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of Lake City to participate in the municipal assoc- for the approval of Lake City to participate in the Municipal Association of South Carolina Set Off Debt Collection Program, submit claims to the association who forwards them to the Department of Revenue by December first of each year. The Department of Revenue matches the claims with the refund due to the taxpayer. If there is a match, the Department of Revenue sets off the debt, notifies the taxpayer of the set off, and forwards the amount collected to the association, which then forwards the amount collected minus any administrative fees, twenty-five dollars for the set off, to the entity making the claim. The Department of Revenue has also collects twenty-five dollars from the debtor for every successful set off. These collection costs are charged in addition to the original debt amount. The City of Lake City has written off the total of two hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cent in delinquent debt from the judicial for July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and will set off in twenty twenty-three. Last year's write-off for the Judicial Department was three hundred twenty thousand eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six cent, a difference of forty-six thousand two hundred thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Uh, this is the third year of participating in the Judicial Set Off Collection Program.
Need a motion to approve Resolution two zero two three point zero four three for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, Resolution twenty twenty-three point oh four four, final reading. The City of Lake City is seeking approval for the, for, of the Bid Committee to accept the bid from Signs Limited, Lake City Incorporated, in the amount of forty thousand six hundred twelve dollars and all matters related thereto. Mayor and Council, this is on the, uh, um, capital request.
I was going to get a motion for some due to-
Go ahead.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution two zero two three point zero four four for final reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions?
Did we, did we get any bids from any other?
Uh, we submitted the bids on the state. We submitted the bids, uh, into individual organizations. We got two companies. One company submitted one bid and then an alternate bid, and the local company, there was such a close difference. Uh, we went with the local company, Signs Limited, for the reason that, for servicing and any type of warranty, they're right here in the neighborhood.
What, um, what was the name of the company?
Uh, Skyline Sign and Signs Limited, uh, Lake City Incorporated.
Okay, now, Skyline Signs is from where?
Uh, Myrtle Beach. I think it's Myrtle Beach.
Okay, what was the difference between the two?
Uh, thirty-nine, eight, and forty-six, so eight hundred dollars.
And those, those were only two?
That's all that was submitted, yes. And we ran this bid for thirty days.
Can you explain what project this is?
Oh, this is a project that was on the Capitol request, uh, to put the signs, uh, at Theater Park to replace the little narrow sign that we have there now to communicate better with the citizens of Lake City. We're also going to use this as a revenue stream that we can start advertising for Main Street and, and, and community, um, information.
Okay. I would like to request in the future to, um, include all the bids in the council package and, um, information on the companies that the bids were sent to. Would, would say information, um, request to those companies and their responses.
Any other questions on this resolution? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, Resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh four five, final reading. A resolution seeking approval to create the Lake City Opportunity Corporation. Lake City Opportunity Board will be, consists of five voting members and two non-voting members, which will be determined at a later date and all matters related to, related thereto. This resolution is being brought to the Mayor and Council to establish the Lake City Opportunity Board that will allow the City of Lake City to move forward and apply for EIN number. Voting and non-voting members will be determined at a later date.
Need a motion to approve Resolution two zero two three point zero four five for final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and properly, sec- properly moved as second. Any questions?
Okay, this was presented last month on these tables. Uh, when will the appointment take place of the five board members and two non-voting board members?
Once this is, if this moves forward, then we'll send out an email requesting your recommendation on who you would like to, us to approach for applications or resumes, uh, for consideration.
Okay, will that include council members?
I'm sorry?
Will that include council members? Because when I read this, is this a spinoff from the LC DC?
Uh, no ma'am, this is not a spinoff of the Lake City Development Corporation because we're not doing loans. We're actually trying to do business opportunities, uh, that a normal, um, government organization is not allowed to do.
Okay, well, I used the wrong term, spinoff, but it's pretty much the same, almost the same thing. So, um-
Charlie, you want to speak on that in regards to the Lake City Development Corporation and this? Because it's really two entirely different animals.
Yeah, but they, they are two separate creatures. Yes, uh, this will be have a life of its own. You set it up, it's self-perpetuating and then off it goes. Versus, um, the LC DC certainly had different objectives and goals.
Okay, so, uh, once it passed, you would then send, you said, information to council members to select who we want as board members?
We're gonna, I think, I think we're gonna ask you to select two people for, um, to request resumes from. Um, we do, we do, in that request, it'll be some, some information that you would want to consider that they have some background that would be beneficial to make this organization, um, beneficial.
So, you're gonna give criteria-
And be able to move forward, uh, and operate as an independent operation.
Okay, you're gonna give criteria for the background?
Basically, we're gonna give some, some recommendations and suggestions.
Okay. Will that include council members? I'm not interested, but will that include council members?
Uh, I think it would be a conflict of interest.
It would be a conflict of interest, but a council member can't vote for themselves.
That's correct.
So, if they don't vote for themselves, then it would not be.
It's gonna be up to council to vote on who's gonna be on the board. So, at that point, if somebody says, I want council member so-and-so to be on the board, y'all don't want them there, then you don't, you vote them all. You don't let, you accept it.
Okay, well, if you include that person's name.
I'm sorry?
If you, maybe we can do just straw poll on the council members?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, make sure council members are included. Don't include me because I'm not interested, but I think, um, for the sake of the new council members.
Excuse me, are you saying, excuse me, are you saying that you want to see if the council members want to actually be on the board?
Yeah.
I don't-
That's not why we're creating this Lake City Opportunity Corporation. Um, this corporation, like Mr. Hall stated, is that they will be able to do things that a governmental entity as such as us will not be able to do. So, we will not want to be, I mean, we can't be on that board. We don't need to be on that board.
Well, I, 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 if, if you can show me something proving that a council member does not need to be on there, then I can accept that. Otherwise, um, expected to vote on someone to make decisions that would affect the lives of others, and it will not be a conflict of interest if a council member served.
Okay, we can come back to that, that information right now. The resolution states that if we want to, um, pass or approve to actually create the LC Opportunity Corporation. So, any other questions? If not, all in favor, show of hands, please. Any opposed?
Mayor and Council, uh, have for your consideration, for your, um, information, the monthly financial statement, I think it's your page sixty-seven, um, in your files. Um, we have in the general fund revenues coming in at one million, one ninety-eight. Uh, we have expenditures coming in at one million, one six fourteen. Uh, we've overspent the current revenues at four hundred fifteen thousand, six fifty-nine. Uh, we're at September, so we should be at twenty-five percent of our budget. I will remind you that on our general fund, our revenues are, are pretty much thirty, sixty days behind. So, in reality, we are pretty much in range of what we were last year. Uh, on the water fund, our fiduciary area, we have revenues coming in at seven hundred forty-four thousand, four ninety-three, and we have expenditures of four hundred twenty-four thousand. That's a surplus of three hundred nineteen thousand. In the sewer fund, we have revenues of two million fifteen, and we have expenses of nine oh four. That's a surplus of one hundred ten thousand. Uh, in the stormwater, we have revenues of fifty-three, three one six, expenditures of twelve thousand, five hundred, a surplus of forty thousand, eight one six. And then we have the water reserves and the sewer reserves. Um, six thousand, one forty-five was transferred to the water, which gives us a year-to-date of eighteen, four thirty-five. Six thousand, eleven was transferred to the sewer, which gives us a year-to-date of eighteen, oh thirty-three. And I will let you know that, uh, probably next month, we will have a bill of about sixty thousand dollars to repair, um, the, um, bulldozer at the wastewater, I'm sorry, at the landfill. Uh, it's now into shop. They're sending us an estimate over, but it looks like it's gonna be about a sixty thousand dollar repair job. That is the financial statement through the month of September.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, uh, approval of monthly bills, numbers one through six.
Need a motion to approve bills. Items one through six for October tenth, twenty twenty-three, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions on the bills? Items one through six.
Is this bill inclusive of all services provided to the City of Lake City from all entities?
I'm sorry, I'm not following your question, councilman.
Does it, does it include every monthly bill that's paid from all?
Saying that's over the amount of five thousand dollars, which is what is mandatory to go to council for approval.
Do, how many do we have under the amount of five thousand?
Um, I'm, couldn't answer that question. I would have to pull the, um, check register on a monthly basis and give you that, but you've got, uh, electricity bills, phone bills, cell bills, you've got monthly operational bills, so.
Brandon can just give an estimate, you know?
Well-
So, if, I mean, if you look at the, the, the report that I just gave you, that our expenditures, uh, through the year-to-date, we processed expenditures in, in, in regards to general fund of one million, six fourteen.
Yes, I understand that and I'm, I'm looking at it, but I would still like to, um, get an idea of how many bills being paid under the amount of five thousand monthly and to whom they're paid to.
So, any questions relating to the bills we have in front of us tonight from items one through six? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, next. Thank you, William Hall, excuse me, Mr. Hall. Next, we, uh, we do not have any items for executive session on tonight, so we're gonna move forward um, with our council member and mayor reports for this evening, and I am going to start with Councilmember Askins.
Sorry, just ready for no comment. You know, I was doing what's called briefly in our trip to Washington, D.C., uh, a couple weeks ago. To be brief about it, it came out very well, since we've secured funding from, uh, Carson Clowder's off, office and also Lindsey Ram's office, so it timed out the meeting. Um, I was glad for that. That was our first, I believe it's our first time as a delegation ever going up there to Lake City, going up to Washington. So, Mr. Maruchai is heading that there. First time in a while. But, um, it was, it was extremely productive. Um, we got commitments to help us fund some bodies going to Lake City. I'm not gonna speak about the details because everybody's been following the political news. The House of Congress is a little bit, uh, out of whack right now. So, that throws the timeline whenever we might receive funds and how much they might be out of whack. So, I'm not gonna talk into that, but I would do what I say is, uh, Mr. Hall, mayor, you did an excellent job in the meeting. I appreciate it. Um, and overall, I hope we continue, maybe send some delegations in the future to get it helped out with this. Again, I hope nobody said I was gonna do no comment tonight.
I guess we can say we got the ball rolling.
Yeah, ball rolled. Everyone will keep up. And that's good.
Thank you.
No comment.
I too can echo to what, um, Councilmember William said. Great event. Um, the atmosphere was really nice, and, um, I think we accomplished a lot. Let them know that Lake City is our needs and the world were mother of purpose building. That's one of the main thing that we are striving to do. And, 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 you know, with the, um, everything that going on with the city, water, sewage, and everything of that. Let them know that we are here. We're a small city, but we are large in heart, and, uh, I thought it was a great event. Thank you for the opportunity to go into D.C.
I'm gonna pull a William Askins, no comment, like, nah. But, um, I'm not gonna echo everything they said, but, um, definitely was a great event. Uh, we definitely, uh, put Lake City on the map. Uh, we made ourselves known as a whole. Um, thank you for that opportunity. Um, just two quick announcements. Well, Reverend Hooker already stated, um, about Wesley Chapel, um, one hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary, November eleventh and twelfth. Um, if you can come, please come out to the workshop on that Saturday and then the Sunday service on Sunday. And also, the Brandon Rose Bowl is Saturday at the stadium. It's starting at nine thirty. Um, that is also, the regular season games will be played as well, so if you guys are available, please come out to that as well. Um, continue to be safe, stay safe, and see you all next month.
Thank you all for coming. Come back next month. That's it.
Good evening. Um, thanks for everyone to, uh, for coming out. I see a lot of people from, uh, my district, um, here, so thanks for coming out and, uh, showing your support. Um, I greatly appreciate it. Also, um, I'd also like to thank the City of Lake City from the, from the last meeting for Ashley stepping up and Ashley, the police force, um, for Ashley coming up, excuse me, stepping up and coming out, uh, through District Four to ensure that everyone is kept safe because that was a lot going on, but thanks so much. Keep up the good work. Uh, thanks again to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the first, uh, Crossroads Market. I think that was a success. I went there. That was pretty, um, festive, and it's a lot of nice little vendors, so I appreciate that. Um, again, um, of course, this month, again, is breast cancer awareness month, and my mom is a two cancer, a two-time, uh, breast cancer survivor, so we've been through it all, but my mom is the strong lady, so she is, um, she's pressing on through, so we greatly appreciate that. And today is actually, um, National Mental Health Day, so, um, just keep that in mind. Um, again, um, we can, we can also speak from the, um, African-American community that mental health is a taboo subject, and of course, they always say take it to the, to the altar and leave it there, but sometimes you need to actually talk to somebody to get some feedback. So, um, it's okay to seek counseling. It's okay to talk to somebody because people, um, do need someone to talk to. And of course, in my district, I have had two suicides in the last couple of months, um, where, um, my constituents, two of them had committed suicide. So, mental health is very important, and as a healthcare provider, I'm big on that. And the other thing, um, I would like to add to with the breast cancer awareness month, um, is a, another thing with the African-American community, and it could be also within the community, but I know for sure that, um, we don't like to get a lot of sunlight because we don't like heat, but your vitamin D levels affects is one of the causes that, you know, can actually cause breast cancer. So, please, whenever you go get your labs and all that good stuff, ask your doctor to check your vitamin D level because you're probably deficient. I spent time in Iraq, and we wore a full battle rattle, and I still came back home with a vitamin D of ten. I'm just being honest. And it needs to be thirty and above. So, um, just keep that in mind. Talk to your providers, ask questions, ask questions, ask questions. Other than that, thank y'all, and we'll see you next month, and have a safe following. Y'all be safe out there. Tell those kids to be safe.
Thank you, councilmembers, for your reports on tonight. Once again, um, as your mayor, I thank you. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, one- Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, want to thank everyone who is viewing on Facebook. Um, however you can engage and get yourself involved. So, um, a lot has been said tonight through presentations, public comment period, and our council reports. I want to encourage everyone just to govern themselves accordingly to everything that's been said tonight. I want to thank the chamber, different organizations, um, community groups, um, for all the different events we have going on in Lake City. Lake City is a small, busy little town. We have a lot of things going on, and one can't say we don't have a thing going on. There's a lot of people that I speak to on the outside of Lake City that says, we come to Lake City. You know, wanna know about just driving through and what's going on here. Um, we had Breast Cancer Walk that was just done by Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we have Fire Prevention Week all this week. We had a parade last night with all the sirens going down Main Street. There was, there was no fire, but hey, um, it's just the, the beginning of Fire Prevention Week. And our, and our Lake City Fire Department and all the surrounding areas of the fire departments came, came out, and they are actually visiting the schools. So your children, your grandchildren have probably been talking about, um, learning something about fire prevention and fire safety. Um, thank you for all the different prayer groups that have been going on, um, out and about into our communities. We need prayer. We need to keep prayer in our community and in our city. Domestic violence awareness and so much more. Um, just like Councilwoman Cooper said, the Crossroads Music and Market, uh, was a success. It was a lot of people down South Street and throughout Lake City, um, coming to the festival. So a great success to the, um, the Chamber of Lake City. Uh, we have so many different other events that's coming up. Brandon Rose Day, uh, Festival of Frights. Frights, um, going down Main Street. So just pick and choose, find something to go to in Lake City. Show your face, enjoy yourself. Lastly, I just want to say that we are really moving in a good direction in Lake City. Um, a few of us, like we stated, went to DC. We left a positive mark in DC about Lake City. We went down there, a mission, a goal, to just let them know who we are and what our needs are. We, um, we just wasn't speaking from the leaders. We took a video, um, and you can actually check that out on our Facebook page. A video of community members, and just to show them from that point that, can you hear me? The video will be posted on Facebook on Thursday, so take a look. We went out throughout the com, the community, and we just, um, got some community, different community members to take this video to DC to let them just see for themselves who Lake City is. And they received it very well, and I, and I appreciate, um, them taking the time out to listening to us, um, because we're on the right path. We want them to know who we are. And they have funding that we need. So you have to ask, right? You have to make those connections. You have to make those relationships, and that's what we did in DC. We all here, council members, city administration, staff, all you all, the citizens. Um, we may disagree at times, and that's fine, but what I can say is that we have the same goal and vision, and that is to see Lake City move forward. I think that's a true statement. We may disagree at times, and it's fine, but we all have the same goal. So to see that goal happen and to see that vision come for the City of Lake City, we gotta continue to work together. We gotta continue to pull together. And I really truly think that Lake City is going in the right direction. So as your mayor and council members, we took that oath to do that to the best of our ability. That's all we can promise, is doing it to the best of our ability, and we are working hard to do that. So I love you all. I hope everyone have a good night, and I just need a motion to adjourn. Thank you.